Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Vader City Council. It's Friday, May 8th at 7:32 AM. Roll call.
Donna Rogers?
Here.
Jason Bailey?
Jason's not here. He communicated to me yesterday that he was gonna try to call in, but um, but he didn't say he was gonna be absent.
Mayor Shai?
Here.
Mike Parsons? Samantha Lovelady? Here. Randy Hall?
Here.
Alright, we have court. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, no one is innocent under oath and invisible with everything in justice for all.
Mayor's report. I'd like to remind our city council members to keep informing citizens that we have the deferred sewer utility late fees available. And if anyone is interested in that, to please call City Hall. The CARES Act, so along with the individual stimulus checks that folks got, cities and governments were also going to be given some money. And so Vader will receive the minimum amount available for a city, which is $25,000. Now, that money comes with strings attached. It can only be used for COVID-19 related expenses, and of course, we really haven't had any. And so currently, we would have to give that money back at the end of the year. Some of these state officials are working on changing those rules so that the cities will be able to utilize that to offset losses in sales tax revenue and other items that are in their general budget. So more to come on that later, but right now, we haven't gotten it yet, and even if we did, we wouldn't be able to spend it.
Is it a grant or a loan?
It's a grant.
Okay.
What was that, Dan?
Are they recording this meeting?
Yes, I have it being recorded.
This conference will now be recorded.
There will be two public hearings next month at our regularly scheduled council meeting. It was discovered this week that we needed to have a public hearing specifically for the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan and for our Vader Municipal Code. And so we needed to put those in the paper, which doesn't come out until next week, and then we have to wait 15 days before we can actually have the public hearing after that. So that puts us out to June 12th. But those will be the last steps we need to finish our comp plan and our municipal code. And so both of those items should be on the agenda for your consideration of adoption as well after the public hearings that'll happen at the beginning of the meeting. Any questions on those? Alright, council reports. No council reports at this time. Agenda approval. I do have one addition to the agenda. Our planning committee chairman Scott Gross would like to talk during special reports, so I'd like to add planning committee report to that.
I make the motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for May 8th, 2020 with the addition of a special report from the planning committee.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda for May 8th with the addition of the planning committee report. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovelady. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council minutes for the meeting on April 24th, 2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the minutes for April 24th. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers for the beginning of May 2020 with the total amount being $17,250.41.
We have a motion by Ms. Lovelady to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the vouchers, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Mr. Gross, are you with us? Scott, are you there? I see you on my list. Alright, well maybe we'll do a special report from Mr. Gross towards the end of the meeting then. Moving on to city business. So I have on here, item number one, council to discuss final draft of the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. This is part of the comp plan. It's, it was shown and seen by the public during the planning committee public hearing, and it was discussed. There were some issues found with it, and they were fixed. But this item in particular needs to have its own public hearing and its own resolution. So that will be coming after the public hearing. I just wanted to make sure that the council had time to take a look at it, if they had any comments leading up to that, to feel free to discuss it now.
Mayor Shai, I'm here. My computer locked up. I wasn't able to unmute myself, so when you're ready for me, I'm ready.
Okay, we'll do it during the public comment.
No worries. Sorry about that.
Nope, it happens. Six-Year Transportation Plan Comments?
Are they in, are the corrections in the comp plan?
Yes.
That were made?
Yep. The references to our street were fixed, and there was also a second error in the, in there. There was a street that had been vacated that no longer belonged to the city that was in the improvement plan that we removed.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, well, in a couple of meetings, we will have that available for your adoption right after a public hearing. Moving on to item number two, comprehensive plan discussion. Once again, I just, this is a large item. I wanted to be sure council had ample time to review it before we have it available. Hopefully, it should be on June 12th as well for your adoption. Any discussion? Questions? No? Okay, good. Next, council to discuss final draft of the new Vader Municipal Code. So this is a long time coming as well, and we've been waiting for this. The 60-day Department of Commerce review period just finished up on May 3rd, and so all that remains is one public hearing, and it should be available for council adoption. So you guys should all have gotten a copy of that new code in your email. It's a great document. I've used it already for reference. It's a total comprehensive list of all of our ordinances put together in an easy-to-find document, so you can search for things quickly. It's gonna be great to have on our website for individuals to access from home. Any discussion at this time? If not, I will include this on the agenda for next meeting as well. I know it's a large document to read or proofread in just a couple of days' time. Okay, hearing no discussion. We'll move on. Council to discuss draft update to the city of Vader employee policies. This update is grant, fully grant-funded. The, our policies are out of date. They were out of date. They did not take into account the state's new family leave laws and things of that nature. So the attorney has gone through and fully updated it to make it compliant with state laws, and I would hope that you were able to take a look at it and if you had any input right now.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Yeah, alright, but that's okay.
Okay, we do have the option at this time to be more generous to our employees if we wanted to. Right now, a lot of things are fairly minimum as far as what the state would require, but that was up to the council.
Well, I saw it, and it's quite lengthy. We're gonna have more time to go through that.
Absolutely. If you, yeah, we can, we can have it available for next meeting as well on the agenda for further discussion before I send it back to the attorney to have her integrate the two parts together into the final document.
Okay.
Alright. Anyone else at this time? Okay, hearing done. Item number five, council to consider purchase of a replacement lawnmower. I'm not sure if some of you have heard, but the back axle that runs through the transmission on our current lawnmower broke, and so it'll be a very expensive fix. And it's my understanding that that lawnmower was bought used five years ago, so we've got quite a bit of use from it. But the grass continues to grow, and we don't have a lawnmower right now. So there were a couple of options sent to you in an email. I have them here too. I can share them on the screen live if that's required.
I have a copy of what you sent, Joe, so that's fine with me. And if that's the one that John wants, that's the one that John gets as far as I'm concerned.
Both of these units have a three-year warranty, bumper-to-bumper. Well, I guess they don't have bumpers, but whatever, the front-to-back warranty. And so we do have money in the budget if that was a concern. If you remember, last year, we budgeted quite a bit of money for a third office employee for code enforcement only, which we have not taken advantage of. And then we were going to, when we hired Jill Nielsen, back on a temporary contract basis, we were gonna use some of that money for that. And at this time, we've used very little of that money. She hasn't actually put in a whole lot of hours. And so we have plenty of money left in the budget to support either one of these lawnmower choices.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's just whichever one John prefers.
I think his preference was the Cub Cadet Zero Turn. It would save him time and trying to mow around tight, tight things in our parks, and time is money.
Yeah, it's a pretty good mower. I have that mower myself.
From Randy, maybe you should be mowing our parks if you've got that mower.
Probably, huh?
Do we have any motions on the table?
Well, I make a motion to proceed with the Cub Cadet Ultimate Series GT1.
We have a-
For that, say.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to purchase the Cub Cadet mower as listed. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Lovelady. Any other discussion at this time? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I think you have that mower too, don't you, Mike? You have a bigger, bigger version of it.
Yep. Did, did we get that dragged behind land plane for him yet?
Oh, yes, we got that right away, and he's been using it. He actually used it at, last update I heard, he used it down at McMurphy to drag the driveway. And originally, he was gonna buy, request that we buy new gravel for that driveway, but after he used that greater attachment, he felt like we didn't need new gravel. So it's already saved us money.
Nice.
Item number six on the city business council to consider resolution 08-2020, LGIP access update. So this is kind of a, just a performer kind of item. The LGIP is our investment pool that the city uses. You can think of it as a savings account. The city has two accounts, one with Timberland and one with the LGIP. It's the local government investment pool. Some of our general fund revenue sits in there. It acquires a higher level of interest rate than Timberland, which is why we use it. So this resolution gives me, as the, as the new mayor, the ability to access that money and move it over into the Timberland account or vice versa, from Timberland into the LGIP account. And that's what this resolution does.
And for what purpose?
So some of our money that comes from the state, for instance, liquor taxes and things of that nature, they get automatically deposited into that account. So that's money that we use for expenses throughout the year. And so it's just a matter of moving it from the LGIP account into the Timberland account so that we could actually write a check and spend that money.
Okay, plus it makes, plus it earns a little bit more money, too.
What was that, Randy? I didn't catch that.
But it earns more interest as that too, right?
Yeah, which is why the city has used it over the years, when we've used it for many years.
Not, not because the banks were paying much, but-
So we already have the account. This is just a matter of putting my name on it so that we can still move money around.
Okay, so you said it's for expenses, any particular type. I don't know anything about this, so I'm just curious what, if it can be used for anything at your discretion?
No, no, this is not, this is not extra money. This is, all of this money is money that was accounted for in our regular budget. It's just another savings account. You can think of it like that.
Okay.
Where we-
Okay.
That's not with the same bank. It's what it is.
I see.
That's an easy way to explain it. Hopefully, that works.
No, that's fine, there.
Oh, Donna wanted me, Donna, Diane wanted me to let you know that there are limitations of what I can approve without council authorization. So I don't have just blanket authority over the account.
Oh, okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 08-2020 as written.
We have a resolution by Ms. Lovelady to approve resolution 08-2020 as written. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment. We'll start with Mr. Gross. Scott, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Alright.
Sorry about the challenge before. So after the last meeting, so basically Saturday is tomorrow, I sat down and I started going through the council meeting minutes starting in January of 2014. When I was going through the minutes, a couple of things popped out at me that I wasn't sure if anything had progressed with the items or not, so I just kind of wanted to bring them back to the councils and your attention. One of them was on 4/12 of 2018, there was a mention about USDA loans and grants that could be used for community facilities, water, wastewater, storm drain. Chipper purchase was mentioned. I don't know if anybody ever looked into the programs that were available through them to see if there's anything available. On 11/8 of 18, it was stated that the State Department of Transportation had funds for special speed zone signs for the school area. Then in April of 19, on the 11th, it was determined that it was not in the budget, but that the city was going to apply for grants for about $20,000. And I don't know if that ever occurred or not. So those were the notes, that kind of thing that stood out to me when I was going through them. The reason why I went through them was based on the minimal conversation we had at last meeting about the planning committee ordinance. It's kind of a bit of a train wreck, and I know we spoke last night, Mayor Shai, about things. It seems that there, there was a placement of positions based on the ordinance and timeframes for those positions, but there were never position numbers assigned to each chair or each, each position of the person. So for some reason, it wasn't adhered to by ordinance as far as when people came on, when they should expire. So I spent 12 hours last Saturday going through all of the meeting minutes, anything that was mentioned about planning committee, I made a note on. Based on the notes that I generated from those meeting minutes, I created a spreadsheet, which I shared with you previously. I have updated it a little bit based on our conversation we had last night, so I'll shoot that over to you so you have a more realistic copy. The only other thing that I wanted to say from our conversation last night was maybe what we should do is have the, it should, it should be a term, term-end date that's static, kind of just like for the council, where there, you know, you have a voting day, so there's a set date that happens. We should have that based on what the ordinance was written for, because it had a start date. So that should be like an anniversary date moving forward. They have it set up currently in the ordinance to assign a chairperson from the current member pool at, I think it's to the, I think it was the end or beginning of December. Regardless, you're only going to have a six-month period before you're going to have a potential change in the guards if, you know, because everything is supposed to be up in June. So I would think that we should change that and move that over so that it coincides with, with the expiration time. I have one other thing I was going to say. Well, position numbers also, as I had mentioned, we should have position 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. So then that way, the, the terms and the positions are, are in alignment. As you saw on my, the spreadsheet that I generated, I kind of put that all together, so it hopefully flows well and it's easy on the eyes to understand. I had one other note, and I didn't write it down. Oh, the only other thing was because of Mason, and with, when he was appointed, he's off by like four months or something from when the actual end dates are. So there should be something done to put him back in. When we had talked yesterday, Mayor Shai, you had stated that when he was appointed, it was understood that it should be for a three-year period. And then I had mentioned that I saw something that if, if there wasn't a replacement term, that it was supposed to be for one year and then three years after that, then we determined that that was incorrect. But I still feel in this case, because he filled the position of a one-year term that was empty, that he theoretically would still have that one year. Had it been a two-year vacancy position that was open, then he would have the two-year term.
Okay.
Did I confuse everybody besides you? No talking detail about it.
Yeah, I saw the document, so I kind of know where you're, where you're going with this. Yeah, like I said last night, we're gonna, I'm gonna follow up on that and make sure that, figure out why we're doing it the way we're doing it right now and, and the best way to fix it if there is a problem.
Right, well, you have four people expiring, what, 15 days, 18 days, whatever it is, and the ordinance isn't written that way. It's written to be staggered so that you don't have your entire committee done at the same time. It's for a purpose. So the way that it's staggered and the way that it's set now, we have two people that are expiring in 2021 and, excuse me, three people that are expiring in 2021 and then two that would be expiring in 2022. So it keeps us on that, that, that alternate schedule and not having everybody fall out at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, I agree that, that we need to figure out what's going on, and it's a priority. I'm gonna start working on that right away.
Okay.
Thanks.
That's all that I have. Anybody have any questions about what I brought up?
I don't have any questions, but I would-
Okay, I'm good. Thank you for your time.
In my opinion, I don't see a need for a planning committee anymore for Vader. They weren't really that involved in what the planner's doing anyway, and the public doesn't know anything about what's going on. The planner gives no reports. We don't know what's being built or what's coming or what's in process. And I've watched over the years that our planning committee does not seem to function in those roles anymore. I, they didn't function really much in the comp plan. It's more or less that they just rubber stamp something whenever we need it done. So I don't see a need for a planning committee that, and we don't actually need a planning committee. If we don't have one that's gonna be fully functional, I don't see the reason for one, because the council can take care of any approval that the planner has anyway.
I'm, I'm fairly certain that, that there are different state regulations that require us to have a planning committee.
I, I don't believe there is, actually. But neither here nor there. We're not, our planning committee just doesn't function that well, and that's nothing against anybody on it. It's just that we're not using it like other cities do. They weren't really involved in the comp plan. Um, they weren't really involved in the comp plan anyway. And the planner that we have, um, I'm not really satisfied with that guy personally, so, um, dragging us out.
I, I, I have to disagree with you. They, they've accomplished quite a bit, actually. They, they come to, to an extent of planners' steps.
The chance.
They've developed a comp plan. That wasn't the same comp plan that was before. They've actually changed stuff. Like the past few comp plans have just been the same exact thing. There was probably even post, there was probably even horse tie-downs on the street on the last one.
Um, I don't think it's that extreme, but, um, the, um, planner has done all of that and the co- uh, planning committee has just approved it. They haven't actually sat down and done any of the hard work of doing the comp plan. Uh, this guy, the co- this guy has been doing this comp plan for several years now and, uh, I, I've seen where the, uh, planning committee has put off having meetings because there wasn't any work to do. Well, we had a comprehensive plan that was in progress, so if they were doing any actual work on it, uh, they would have been having meetings all the time and they would have been public and we would have known what was going on. And we just, we just don't. I don't see a reason for it myself, but that's just my opinion.
Right, any other public, um, comment? We don't really have a lot of public attending at the moment. Alright, moving on to elected official a comment. Are there any other comments from our elected officials?
Well, I just wanna just, uh, the last topic is that, 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 the only way the planning committee is totally ridiculous and, uh, her statements are to- uh, not true. They have accomplished a lot and it's very necessary. And the chairman has done a good job. So just because she doesn't like him, I think that's the motivation.
I think you're just-
Other than that, I'm not, I don't have much to say about it.
You need to take a step back. I didn't say anything about-
No, you, you need to take a step back.
That wasn't the reason I-
You need to take a step back. You're wrong.
Alright, folks. We have two different thing, two different opinions and, uh, we've heard them both and I both, I value both opinions. Do we have any other comments from our council members?
I think that sums it up pretty nicely.
I'll just make a quick little comment about how we should always shop in local. Go to Little Crane if you want a salad for lunch. I know Mike Parsons has his business. Order some honey, order some soap. Kind of keeping things a little more local because a lot of those businesses are suffering right now. And to kind of support our local residents.
Yeah, thank you for that observation. Yeah, it's still, the businesses are still, still hurting, so make sure to encourage everybody to shop local as much as possible.
Raising my hand.
Alright, Scott?
Um, re- really quick, I just go back to the, the ordinance and, and the planning committee and the purpose or whatever Donna was trying to get at. RCW thirty-six dot seven zero is the Washington State law that talks about planning. There's the Planning Enabling Act, so that should cover any reason why the city does have a, and should maintain a planning committee.
Okay.
Thirty-six dot seven zero.
Yeah, it has to be part of the law. It's gotta be a requirement. And besides that, it's a ridiculous suggestion. There's so much involved with it. Now, obviously, she hasn't given, given one side or one look at, at, at the plan.
Well, obviously, you don't know anything about me. I've been on the planning committee before when we did the two thousand and five comprehensive plan, and we did the work.
Which was just copying the one before it.
Pardon?
Which was just copying the one before it and said, yep, that sounds good. Let's use it again. That was really difficult. Now this time, they actually changed stuff and made it up to date.
Yeah, maybe when you were on it, that was true, but it's not true any, any longer. You obviously haven't paid much attention.
I've paid plenty of attention and I'm getting real tired of working right now.
I think not.
Okay, folks. I think we've heard the different opinions already on this. Do we have any other businesses?
They just talked to Randy because I'm getting tired of being insulted. I didn't say anything that I said to insult anybody, and I don't appreciate his nasty little comments.
But you, you're the one who has the nasty comments for everybody.
Right.
It's kind of hard to believe nasty comments. I, I'm just related to that.
Okay, we're, we're done with this line of conversation.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other topics to discuss? Alright, hearing done. This meeting is adjourned at eight oh six AM. Thank you.